Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session, Monday, July 12th, 2021, 6:00 PM, Anamosa Library Learning Center via Zoom. 1.0 Roll Call.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
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 Note, all members who are present in chambers, 2.0, Plagiarial Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have individuals joining us virtually, so would you please remind them of how to gain your attention when it is time to address the council?
Absolutely, and before I get started, Beth, I'm not sure that your mic turned on. The button is on the top. But for Angela and Jake, if you would like to get my attention to unmute on an agenda item that you would like to speak on, you can either send me a chat in the, or message in the chat box, or you can raise your hand, which should be under your reactions option if you're on a desktop or a laptop. On a mobile device, I believe it's under the dot-dot-dot option, more option.
Rebecca, can you hear me on this one?
No, well, you're quieter than everybody, but...
How about this one?
That's better.
3.0, Approval of Agenda. Motion by Jeff, second by John. All those in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to approve carries unanimously. 4.0, Motion to Approve the Minutes from the Following Meetings. 4.1, June 28th, 2021, Regular City Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by John. Any further discussions on the minutes as submitted?
Second by Rich.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it was Alan. I spelled out the wrong name.
It's okay, I've been called worse.
With no other discussion, all those in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. 5.0, Public Hearings, none. 6.0, Proclamations, none. 7.0, Old Business. 7.1, RagBri Committee Update. Doesn't appear anyone with the executive committee is here to give the update. If they show up, I will return to it. Is there any council discussion on it?
I guess the only question I have is, the $15,000, where we stand with that?
We have not seen it yet.
Can we, should we have contact information for the director? Can we reach out to him to find out the status of that? I don't know.
We already have, it was supposed to have been here before the Fourth of July.
Okay. Have we received anything?
No.
No. It was supposed to be one was...
The chamber did receive, or the Anamosa Festival received $17,000. The $2,000, that was, that's for the volunteers, and the $15,000, which she thought was for the charitable donation, which was supposed to come after the event.
They're just still flopping, they're taking the 15 now, and then the 15 that comes in will be to the city.
We don't know.
We're not sure where we stand with that.
It was made fairly clear to the RagBri organization that funds aren't, want to be accepted on behalf of the city by anyone else, but that seems to be what happened.
So we've got a little issue with the overall RagBri institution in and of itself, right?
It'd be interesting if other communities have received those as well.
They have, I've checked, I have checked with them, they've all received the $17,000.
Somebody named Dusty in their little black box has just appeared, I think it's Dusty Embry, she's asked to be unmuted, ready to give the update. While I unmute her, Rich, it's hard to hear you, so I don't know if your mic is turned or muted.
I'll set up.
Better. Yeah. All right, Dusty, you should be unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, sorry I'm late, I couldn't get in, and so I called the library and they gave me the right link, so. I just am here to give the RagBri update. Basically, we're at go time, right? We just have a little over two weeks left in our planning and getting ready for all the visitors to come. Our committees are all getting really excited and nervous and, you know, spending a lot of hours and time, and I know Leanna is definitely not getting as much sleep as maybe she needs to, so I just thought I would give a couple of notes of interest. One is the volunteer committee is still looking for volunteers, and anybody that's interested in that can go to the Jones County Volunteer Center, and you can see what opportunities are there online, and you can sign up for any opportunities that are available, so that's a big, a big plug, we need as many bodies on the ground as possible that day working, so that's a big one. Our Hospitality Committee, which is another big one, right, we want to make everybody feel welcome and, you know, very happy when they're in town, and so that committee's led by Sharon Minger, and they're doing some amazing things, planning the fun entrance as they come into town, and then also some big fun, big games that the riders can play as they're meandering around town. Our Campgrounds Committee is working hard, and they're finalizing locations for all the different groups that are coming in. I know Jeff tries to really talk to a lot of the big, the bigger bike groups, and really have them set in stone as to where they're going to go when they come to town. Our sanitation and garbage is a big one, they're making sure they have enough Kaibos and garbage cans in the right location, and as many as possible, so that we can make sure we keep our town clean and neat, and I know last time when we were, the day after was fairly quick, and we had everything picked up, and it didn't look like they'd even been to town, so that's our goal for this time as well. We have a committee working to secure more picnic tables, because that's an important thing for the vendor area, the beverage garden. The beverage garden, speaking of that, we've got two fullhound veterans volunteering to staff the beverage garden, so we're really super excited that they were able to do that and help us out. They've had their tips training, so they're ready to go, and excited about that. In next week's paper, we're going to be promoting that, just kind of the general cleanup of the community, clean up our yards, get ready to, you know, you know, make sure we're putting our towns' best foot forward as far as welcoming riders and having everything look as pristine as it can for 15,000-plus people coming into our community. I think those are the big, those are the big highlights that I have for you today.
Council, have any questions or comments for Dusty?
Are the routes finalized?
As far as I know, that's not something I'm well-versed on, but I'm fairly certain they are.
I just need to know when we'll get a copy of, say, the camping map, the location of the showers, we need, we need maps for everything, we don't have any maps whatsoever.
Okay, so I was just working with Kristi at Jones County GIS, not her fault, she's been on us trying to get stuff, and we've been trying to finalize things, so we should have a finalized map by Thursday for you, so we'll make sure that gets to you, all the different ones. She's able to pull out different routes, you know, the, just the campground-only map, and some things like that, so if I know exactly what you want, she can pull out specific pieces of our overall map for you.
So do you have a committee that's working on the maps, then? Because we haven't seen anything, or...
Kristi from Jones County GIS is working with all of the committees, basically, too. So main committees would be, you know, like our shuttle, like what our shuttle routes are, where our campgrounds are, so she's working with Jeff to, you know, have the campgrounds on there, we're working as far as shuttle goes, our vendors, so all those little pieces, and I guess I'm probably the point person besides Kristi, she's the one that's getting it all on the map, because that's, that's beyond my capability, but I've been trying to gather the little bits of information and get to her. There's a gentleman from Des Moines, too, that they've contracted for that big sign that they're going to put the, you know, the big map on once they come to town, so there'll be a big sign with the map on it, and then we're also working on a printed version. So the reason you haven't seen it is basically because it's still, it's in draft, but this week it will be finalized, or hope to be finalized.
No, I was more curious as to who's, who they've been talking to about getting the draft done, like where they're putting things, and I know, I know Jeff has talked to wastewater, and Jeremiah's been involved, Chief White's been involved, but...
Yeah.
Seen anything yet, so I didn't know who was making the decisions on where things were being placed.
Mainly the chairs of those committees, so food vendors and campgrounds and things like that. And, and of course Jeremiah, we've been working with the police, too.
Well, thanks for that update, Dusty.
Thank you.
If council has any more questions?
I do have one more question about the alcohol licensing. So we were looking to approve another extended outdoor service area for the bowling alley, but I've also had some other requests for other outdoor service areas, but I haven't heard from anyone in the, on the committee that's permitting those, or that's telling them to apply for those?
I thought it was in the ordinances that there was only one outdoor beverage garden permitted, that was my understanding.
That was my understanding as well, but we've had two, and Tucker's Tavern and Anamosa Bowling Center.
Well, I, I mean, I think we passed ordinances that said that there was one outdoor service area, and that would be the one that we have, so I didn't know about the others.
Okay. They said that the committee sent them to City Hall, so that's why I'm just clarifying, because I have a couple more that I am not sure about, and I also don't know if they've paid vendor fees or anything like that as well.
I, I'm, I guess that's not my area, but I guess I would have thought that the ordinances just said that there was one outdoor service area. I, I would worry that too many outdoor service areas would not make the committee break even.
Right, exactly, exactly, yes.
And that's when we want to make sure that we, as a community, at least, you know, break even.
Well, and I think the question is, because they were approved by somebody from your RagBri committee to do the outdoor services, so...
Oh, I, did somebody have an, like a permit or something? Because I guess I never saw anything or heard anything about that.
There were, there's two outdoor service areas that we, one's on the agenda tonight, and the other one's Tucker's Tavern, and Leanna said that they had been approved by the committee, because I asked where I put them on the agenda.
Okay. Well, that, I guess that's not really my committee, so I, I don't know anything about that.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I wish I could be more helpful, I, yeah, I'm...
It's going to be hard to approve when we don't know.
Betty Weimer has told me that she is on, she's iPhone 2, would you like to, I think, I think she may have more information.
Sure.
Betty Weimer.
I think I've sent her an ask-to-unmute request. We'll see if she can get it.
Because we already approved Tucker's, right?
Correct.
Betty, are you receiving an unmute request? I'm not getting anything. I'll keep trying.
She may have more input, I, I think that one of those is maybe her committee, I'm not certain.
It doesn't appear that we're going to get connected there.
It looks like it's not, for some reason, it's not unmuting on her end, so I'm going to try something real quick, Betty, and then I'm going to send you another unmute request.
Well, technology's a great tool when everybody, when it works for everyone, otherwise it...
Right.
Becomes rather frustrating.
Yeah. Since we can't get you unmuted, Betty, if you can send, oh, no, there we go, maybe? Betty, I think you might be unmuted, can you talk? Oh, it's connecting to audio now, we'll see if that changes anything.
Now it's showing muted again.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, there's one more meeting before that we could still, I mean, we can table it for tonight, and then get confirmation for that one.
Okay.
We still have one meeting left, so we could still have it approved at the next meeting for the event.
Dusty, do you plan to remain with us, that maybe you could reach out to Betty offline and see if she has any information on this second outdoor request?
I certainly can, I can, my plan wasn't to, but I, I'll, I can go unmute and then call her, and then text Rebecca.
Okay. We'd appreciate it, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions or anything for Dusty at this time?
All right, well, yeah, one, one question when you asked her, Dusty, about if they're charging a vendor fee for Tucker's and the bowling alley.
Okay.
The only thing I think about is, you know, if they don't know until the, like, two days before, are they going to need to gather, I don't know.
That would be really hard to not know until after the meeting on Monday night to be ready for Thursday.
Preparation, I mean, yeah.
Well, the thing of it is, is in all reality, it's up to the RagBri committee, and if it comes to us and they say okay, odds are 90%, 95%, we're going to say okay, so there is, they could almost tell them tomorrow that yes, you can do it, or no, you can't, because they've got the ordinance.
Yeah.
And I have that one other request that's hanging out there, which maybe someone can talk, get ahold of me tomorrow, so I can at least confirm that one, too.
Okay, yeah, I'll make sure that, hopefully I can just get ahold of someone now.
Betty did let me know she's going to try getting onto a different device, so by the time we get to the, that agenda item she might be on, you can answer questions.
8.0, New Business. 8.1, Review and Approval of Plans and Specs for the Well Number Six Project, and place these documents on file.
Move to approve.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council Discussion.
I see they changed the driveway from the original plan.
So we were trying to create the separation between where the park, the trail is for the park there, the parking lot, so that way it's closer to the modern plan.
Well, I'm, I like it, because then you're not driving through the parking lot, if there's cars there, there's potential of an accident or something, so I'm okay with that, I just noticed that that was a little different this time.
Most of the time there aren't cars, though, in the parking lot, it's, it's not a very frequently used part.
Well, a lot of times it's the neighbors that are parked in there, because they're having something going on.
Have the neighbors, have we sent a letter, have they been notified formally? I mean, I know it's on the agenda, but if this is going on?
Most of them have talked to someone here, either at the water plant or pumping, so they will get notice when they're going to start the drilling, because that will be really the only part that's going to be a little bit loud, or it'll be a hum, you know, while they drill the well.
Do we know what their, what the drives are going to be made out of yet?
We were going to do it in concrete, so it'll be paved.
Could it be in milling, or...
Or in blacktop?
The only thing we're worried about is how heavy the trucks are to pull the pumps to the well, and whether or not it would end up, you know, it wouldn't be too heavy with a truck on it.
Beth, could you repeat that?
We, we were, we considered millings or blacktop, but the weight of the trucks that go in to service the well...
Are quite heavy.
So how thick will the concrete be? Any idea?
Robert, do you remember?
It's maybe six inches of a heavy trucks, warmer.
It's either six or eight inches of concrete.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to do something cheaper, but same time we have the ordinance saying new construction, residential needs to do cement, and then the city does something else, it's, it's like we're not following.
The ordinance says cement, blacktop, or it could be, it's not limited to cement.
It just can't be gravel.
Yeah, from the sidewalk, ahead of the sidewalk, it has to be paved, I mean, from the sidewalk out, it's got to be cement regardless.
Correct. It just has to be paved.
You can do a blacktop sidewalk, like, could be chromed, chromed or...
Not a sidewalk.
From the sidewalk to the street could be blacktop, from the sidewalk to your garage could be blacktop.
The sidewalk has to be...
The sidewalk has to be concrete.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Additional discussion necessary? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to approve plans carried unanimously. 8.2, Resolution Setting a Public Hearing Date of August 23rd, 2021, 6:00 PM at the Anamosa Library and Learning Center and via Zoom on Proposed Plans and Specifications, Proposed Form of Contact, Contract, and Estimate of Costs for the Anamosa Well Number Six Project and the Taking of Goods for Such Work.
I'll make a motion to set a hearing for August 23rd, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the Anamosa Library.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Any public comment? Beth, conduct the roll vote, please.
Aprilin?
Yes.
Scout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Buckart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. 8.3, Review and Approval of an Extended Outdoor Service Area Request for the Anamosa Bowling Center Liquor License on July 29th, 2021, for RagBri event. So in following with discussion earlier, Dusty or Betty, were you able to rejoin us?
I haven't seen Betty yet, I can ask Dusty to unmute, and if she's ready, she can
Betty has her laptop up, and she's attempting right now to rejoin.
Do you know if she has the correct link?
I think she does.
All right, Betty, you should be unmuted.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, hi, guys, sorry about that. I hate technology. Okay, so the whole liquor license thing, the reason people are being sent to City Hall is you guys are the ones that set the ordinances, number one. Number two, if they already have a liquor license for an outside permit, Tucker's has an outside permit already, correct? The bowling alley has an outside liquor license already, correct? How can the RagBri committee say you cannot utilize what you already have if that is your normal business? So because of lack of the RagBri committee being the person to say yea or nay on that, that is the reason they were sent to City Hall.
So both of those businesses have an outdoor service area, this is extending their outdoor service area into the street, not their normal operation.
Right, and that's not up to us to determine that, so we told them...
They have to have approval from the committee as per the resolution, the, or the ordinance only sets up one beer garden. This would set up two additional ones, because they'll both be in the street, and they'll both be around a stage.
So, yeah, but you've already approved Tucker's in a past meeting.
Because I was told by Leanna that it was approved by the committee. But I have, I have two more at this point, so I have one more that is someone that doesn't have an outdoor service area requesting one, I do not know from anyone on the committee where they're at with their process, if they, for the committee, or if they have not.
No, nope, nope, nope. The only two people that reached out to committee members was Tammy and Teresa, and it was to our knowledge that if they're already had an outside liquor license, they would be utilizing their outside liquor license, and we're not going to tell the businesses in Anamosa they can't do what is their normal business. If they're requesting a street closure and going out into the street because the ordinances were passed by the city, yes, they were told that that was something they had to have city approval on. So we moved the local stage in front of the bowling alley, and as far as the vendor fees go, I heard that there was questioning about vendor fees, I think that has already been addressed with them.
What do you mean addressed?
It has already been discussed. The vendor fees for the different businesses, as far as whether they're chamber members, not chamber members, whether it's done in like-kind exchange, we, part of the bowling alley's vendor fee was the fact that the local stage would be tapping into the bowling alley's utilities, the electric bill for the bowling alley, and that the... alley's utilities, the electric bill for the bowling alley and that the local stage would be being used in front of the bowling alley and some of the bowling alley's resources. So the vendor fees as far as a bowling alley goes has been worked out with the vendor committee. With a like kind exchange.
So it doesn't go by square footage then for the vendor fee? I mean, it doesn't go by the size of the space they're taking up?
Well, yes, it, it does go by that, but in front of the bowling alley is going to be a stage that is being used all day long by the rag bri committee, a local stage. So we're going to put a stage there when the main, the stage is being done, used by the local stage, which will be finished about 8:30, I believe, or something. I don't remember the time. We're allowing the bowling alley to go ahead and use the stage from that time till 11.
So I guess, Betty, could you please clarify? Has the rag bri committee, uh, willing to, I guess, allow the bowling alley to sell, uh, extend their liquor license? Because the resolution was passed to limit for the rag bri event itself. Uh, so if, if you can speak on behalf of the rag bri committee about the bowling alley.
Well, and you guys know me, I'm all about keeping things the same for everyone. Um, I feel at first, no, we only wanted one outside stage area, one outside beer garden, and that was going to be the rag bribes. Everybody else had their own, but it was already approved for Tucker's. So if it's approved for Tucker's, you can very well not approve it for the bowling alley, in my opinion. And second of all, the bowling alley is allowing the local stage to tap into their, um, electricity and other things, um, so that they're working with the rag bri committee to make the local stage successful. So, um, yeah, I, I don't know what to tell you. You guys are going to have to make that decision. As far as the committee goes, um, we feel there's going to be enough business to go around for everybody. I guess I don't understand who are the other, Beth, can you say who the other businesses are that reached out to you? Because if they're, both these other businesses, Tucker's and the bowling alley are not on Main Street, they're off of Main Street, number one. Number two, um, if they haven't already got an outside permit, we're working with Tucker's in the bowling alley because they already have an outside liquor license.
So their outside license, again, does.
I understand that, Beth, but what I just said was the reason.
Beth is talking.
We already are working with them because of that.
Beth, could you, would you proceed now?
They do not, they, their outside liquor license covers their area that's part of their business. It does not cover what we're asked, what they were asking for. Again, the ordinance only allows for one outdoor beer garden for the rag bri event. The other, the other request does not have an outdoor service area, but now that you've granted two other ones, I don't know what stance there is that rag bri can prohibit them from doing theirs as well. I don't have much information about the other one. I just happened to get a notification from alcoholic beverages that they have applied for it. Um, I don't know if they're serving alcohol there or if it's just, um, to pick up or if they're having a fenced area. I, I don't have a lot of details on that. But I was told specifically that Tucker's Tavern did have permission from the rag bri committee to have an extended outdoor service area and there's going to be live music and beer sales there.
And I understand that. I wasn't part of that conversation, so the committee, when they met, was, I was not there. So Tammy did reach out to me and my conversation with Tammy was such that I have no answer for you. You already have an outside liquor license. You have to clear that through the city and that's what I believe she's doing tonight. So to, I don't know about the Tucker's Tavern, I was not involved in that conversation.
We know who, who else is on the committee that wasn't Dusty and it wasn't Betty? Who else is on the committee?
Well, for food and vendor, it could have been, um, Chuck Bilstein, Doug Adele, myself, Dusty and Leanna. So of that conversation, I'm not sure who was all part of it. But and, and at this point, it's kind of mute. I don't, I didn't know. The only person that reached out to me, that I'm speaking only for myself, was Tammy and I did talk to the committee about it and the conversation was such that, um, she does have an outside liquor license. If there's any changes in what she needs to do, she has to go through City Hall. So, um, that was my conversation with Tammy and I believe Tammy's there for that reason. So.
We can, you can still rescind the other one if you put this new information in this. We have, we have, we have one more meeting before the event, so. If it wasn't actually approved by the rag bri committee.
Well, what I would like to do then is table it and have it in writing from the rag bri committee because right now all we're getting is verbal information. We're trying to have something in writing saying that they're approval for what. Tucker's and whatever, but because it's getting to a point where it's getting, this person says this and this person says this, I don't want to see it in writing. So I'm going to make a motion to table it.
I'll second. The motion by Rich, second by Galen, to table eight point three until the next meeting. Any further counsel discussion? Any additional public comment? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to table carried unanimous until we can get, uh, proper documentation.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Eight point four, resolution approving the hiring and setting salaries of seasonal part-time employees for the Parks and Recreation Department for the 2021 summer season.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Counsel discussion?
They're good kids. They'll do a good job.
Is this off of the pool?
Yep.
Any public comment? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Muckart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point five, resolution setting dates for public hearing on the application for community development block grant funds for housing rehabilitation for July 26th, 2021 at 6:00 PM at the Anamosa Library and Learning Center.
I'm going to publish a setting date for public hearing on the application for community development block grant, um, for July 26th at 6:00 PM at the Anamosa Library.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Counsel discussion?
The applications have been received.
We, we're up to five. We'd like to have six or seven, um, so get the word out. Anybody else get them in there to, to apply to Tracy?
Get at least six to apply.
Um, we'd be, we'd be happier if we had six, but we can still apply with the five.
We don't, we don't know if they qualify until you formally submit one.
Um, so Tracy does put them through some of the qualifications ahead of time. Um, so she thought we had five that were good to go.
Was there a maximum number there?
There's not.
Not a max at all?
Um, we'd like to have six or more, um, just because that gets you the grant funding.
So out of, out of the five, are they mostly outside, inside?
They're all exterior.
All exterior.
Yeah.
I've had a couple people ask and I, I told them to come down to City Hall.
They'd be exterior, not, not the impairments like the.
Correct, correct. So I know she's still in the process of vetting some of them, but first glance she thought they were doing okay.
No other discussion. Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Crow?
Yeah.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point six, resolution setting salary for utility billing clerk.
What has she been at previously?
Um, so right now she is at, so before the last resolution.
1485 is what it says here.
Yeah, where she's at now.
Well, the 1485 is where she is after the 3% increase.
Correct.
Okay.
Previous to that, she was at 1442.
And I can't remember what was she, what did she ask for?
Dollar fifty?
Yeah.
Dollar fifty?
Yeah.
That was from the 14, 1442.
98, 92.
I'd be okay going to 1550.
Could you repeat that, Rich?
I said I'd be okay going to the 1550.
Let's split it down the middle.
That sounds pretty good. It's part of it anyway. Get it up a little.
Yeah.
Take that, that's your motion, Rich?
That would be my motion, 1550.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by John, to extend the salary of utility billing clerk to $15.50 an hour. Further counsel discussion?
Are we setting a precedent?
Well, one thing, I guess it's reviewed by the council, so.
I don't think, I mean, you look at any other department thing, we start now, day one is maybe more than what she's going to be getting most departments. You know, at least you go any of the ways the public works, streets, waste, buy, arrow.
I suppose you could look at it as a precedent, but it's up to us whether it is or not. We make that decision, so.
The way I look at this, we've had a person in a position for a while that does get, you know, does get into some discussions that aren't pleasant all the time.
Sure.
And it's, um, if we've got an employee that we think is doing a good job, I think there should be some way of keeping them and keep them happy.
Well, she's been here longer than anybody else has put up with it.
So let's be honest, people are coming in to compliment on how attractive their water is. So I mean, if you were in any, any private place, you could have employees walk in and ask for a raise at any point in time and then you get to decide, are they a good employee? You want to keep them or?
Yeah.
If we've got a good employee, it takes a lot more to train them. You spend more time training and money training somebody new than somebody that you got.
Beth, did you looked at other communities for something equal to this?
Um, I mean, it's all over the place.
Is it?
Probably not comparing apples to apples.
No, it was so. Yeah, so I mean, it depends on what else they do.
Sure.
Because it's very specific to where they work.
I'm not opposed to, in any way, shape or form, I just wondered.
Yeah. Considered hazard duty, pay. With this being a, an employee personnel, uh, discussion, I will not go to public comment on this. Is there any other counsel discussion? Motion by Rich, second by John for 1550. Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Crow?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point seven, first reading of an ordinance amending section 95.06 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Anamosa, Iowa and adding section 90.103 to require annexation as a condition for connection to city sanitary sewer service and water work systems. Has the city attorney looked this over?
Yes, they wrote it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Beth, what, what prompted this? Is it just catching up or aligning with?
Well, there's been a little bit too much of, yes, someone can hook up and no, so, you know, it seems a little bit ambiguous about how it's been decided in the past. So this just, just takes all of that ambiguousness.
Take all the questions out.
Is there, is there many out there? I mean, can you, if you're in the county now, you can't at this point request to get, let's say, city water or how, how does the process work?
You can, um, and we.
Like what, what's the furthest out? Like where's a rough example of a location?
Well, generally you have to be within a line. So like, let's take, um, Shaw Road. One side of it we service, the other side we don't, but some of them are hooked up to city water. They run the water across the street or.
Well, if you go up Oak Street on the south side, you get up to the end, towards the end of Oak Street and there's like three houses that are actually in county that are more than likely hooked up to.
There's more than one, I knew the one, but there's more than just the one.
And Old Dubuque Road, there's some county addresses that have city water or sewer.
Cross from the golf course.
So there's some now that they're on county tax rate, but they're getting either city water, sewer or both.
Correct.
There used to be items within Anamosa that were in county, but they were within, surrounded by city. So I think those have been hopefully eliminated, but they were that way for a long, long time.
How are they going to be?
So this will only be for new applications.
But the existing ones are grandfathered in?
They are, because we can't go back and ask them for something we didn't ask them for in the first place. So this will only be for new applications. Now let's say if they're only hooked up to city water and they want sewer, this applies.
Okay.
That would be adding a new service.
But if, if property exchanges hands, it's, it's still grandfathered in because of the service.
Yep.
Unless the new person.
Unless they want a new service.
Correct, yep.
And that happens basically then to get it, they're going to have to sign off and, and join city tax rate.
Yes.
Do they pay a double service fee?
They do not. They pay one and a half times.
One and a half of, of both sewer and water?
Right. It used to be 200%, but then that last, um, utility ordinance reduced it to one and a half.
Any other? Any other discussion?
Can you tell me still if the, there's, VNI requires houses if they're within so many distance to hook up to the city? Can you tell me that, if they still require that?
So, yes, so the county, you can request it, we do still have some properties in town where, where they're located, we can't hook them up to the sanitary sewer, so we just sign off saying that they can install a new septic system.
Yeah.
So that's mainly what it's for, it doesn't require them to hook onto the city utility, but if they're not hooked onto it and it's within their range, they have to at least investigate it.
So the, all the ones that are grandfathered in, there's, the only way they'll ever join is if they voluntarily annex themselves?
Um, or if they become an island.
Kind of the Pac-Man thing.
Yep.
Council discussion? Any public comment? Beth, please conduct the roll vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Lockhart?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. 8.7, item one, possible motion to waive statutory rule for second reading of ordinance.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't?
Well, I would, I would like to wait at least another meeting to.
There's no, there's no big hurry or anything like that.
But I, I'd like to at least wait another meeting to see if there are, is any feedback or input from somebody else.
Okay.
Hearing none. Will move forward. 8.8, review and approval of new liquor license for Los Versaces Restaurant.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Allen, further council discussion. Public comment? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion to approve carried unanimous. 8.9, review and approval of current bills.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by John. Any discussion on the bills? Any public comment? All those in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion approved carried unanimous. 9.0, city administrators report.
Um, so the Regis Cities Conference registration is open in September 15 through the 17th, and it's in Oracle. If anyone wants me to sign up, let me know.
September when again?
Uh, 15th through the 17th.
Where is that at, Oracle, you saw it?
Yep.
Is about as close as it will get, or is that a typical eastern part of the state?
It's all over, it's all over the place, yeah. I do know that all of the walking tours have been booked already, so. If you've seen those on the registry, if you go to browse the classes available, the different seminars. Those two I have no one booked up on me, I'd like to see. Monday, I will be in Ames for a clerk class, and Ginger will be there Tuesday through Thursday and next week for clerk training as well. Other than that, we're, we're moving along slowly with our, go live with the new system. It's been going pretty well.
Anything else? Any questions for, comments for Beth? Thanks for that report, Beth. 10.0, mayor and council reports, 10.1, mayor's report, not at this time, 10.2, council reports.
The library board met in June, discussion centered primarily around the usual business RagBri plans. There's a trustee position or two open, and grants for some statuary around the library.
And the solid waste commission, we had to hire a new director out at the, the transfer station, and we offered it to a person, and I don't know if he's accepted, so I can't say who it is until we know for sure, so. We had three or four meetings going over applications and things, so.
It's always fun, isn't it?
Like that?
That's always fun.
Oh, it is, it is.
Thanks Kay and Galen for those reports. 11.0, public comment for items not on the agenda. Start with those in chambers. Rebecca, is there anyone virtually would like to?
Nothing is popping up.
Speak to the council.
I don't see anything still, so I think we're good.
12.0, adjournment.
Zomba?
Second.
You're going to get slapped.
Motion by John, second by Jeff. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion approved carried unanimous. Thank you, everyone.